I'd like to wish two flag of the United States of America and to their political religious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Sue.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Nader.
Here.
Mr. Haugie.
Here.
Mr. Sevenson.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, report from planning director, George, it looks like here.
Yes, I'm standing in for Mr. Evaldi today, who is unable to make it. Not very much to report. At the June 11th board meeting, as recommended by your commission, the board approved the Corey Ridge Professional Office Park. They denied the third-party appeal of the Newcastle Wedding Gardens Conditional Use Permit Modification, so two-for-two on those. So with regard to upcoming Planning Commission meetings, June 27th will be canceled, and June 11th is to be determined with regard to the agenda. And that's really all I have for you unless you have anything. Did I say June again?
No, that's already.
I meant July 11th. You guys know what I meant.
You said July 27th would be canceled?
June 27th.
Oh, June 27th.
June 27th, which would be the next hearing.
And then July is what?
July 11th is the agenda, is still being worked on.
Those are both go.
Maybe, maybe not.
All right.
Do you have anything else for me?
No questions, no comments. Thank you, George, appreciate it. Now would be the time for meeting for public comment. These would be comments not relating to anything on today's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to address the commission for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close that part. And we'll go on to our consent agenda. These are both just meeting minutes. I don't know, do we still need to provide an opportunity to pull these off the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody who would like to remove one of these items from the agenda and have a discussion about it? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion.
Motion and a second?
I have a first by Rich Johnson and a second by Larry Sevenson. A vote from Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes.
Mr. Nader.
Yes.
Mr. Haugie.
Yes.
Mr. Sevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Moss.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us up to our 10:05 item, Community Development Resource E- Service Information item. Shawna?
Good morning, Shawna Purvines, Planning Services, and I'm looking for my clicker. Hey, again, Shawna Purvines, Community Development Resources Agency. The first item that we're going to talk about today is just some advances that the Community Development Resources Agency has been making over the last year to provide just better service to our customers. There we go. So we've had the opportunity to provide this presentation now a few different times. It went to the board earlier in May. And what we really are talking about is about a year ago, we were presented with the opportunity where the county was updating its webpage, and that seemed simple enough. But then we thought, well, what else can we do if we're going to be updating our webpage to just make it a little easier for those customers? We all know that things are changing. We know that our land uses are changing. We know the way we make decisions are changing. Just simply thinking about automated cars and shared vehicles and the way our hospitals communicate with each other are driving our land use decisions in a different direction. So with that, we also have this new generation coming up called Generation Z. These are the children currently today, age four to 21. I was a bit surprised to find out that at this young age, 40% of this generation is driving the purchasing power, or this generation is driving 40% of the purchasing power by 2020. I am the mom of two of those, pretty sure it's my money that they're using to buy those things, but I'm certain that they are driving those decisions. If it's not them, it's their schools, it's their activities. But the things that we now need to do just to make that generation successful is driving some of these technology changes as well. And if you give it a little bit of thought, this age, it kind of, it blew my mind also, this generation never lived without the Internet. They've never had a time when there didn't exist an Internet. So as I mentioned, about a year ago, SEEDRA set out with really two objectives. One was to be a leader in customer service innovation, and two, to provide 24/7 access to our services. What that meant was is we need to automate our business practices, and we also needed to look to new technologies. In this case, it was cloud-based technologies. The outcomes was to ensure that the process and procedures are achieved. We wanted to streamline that review process. We want a clear and consistent submiddle requirements. We wanted to reduce the turnaround time, what we call application to action, and we wanted to provide accountability and transparency. So this is our current suite of e-services. We had originally, for the last year, and if you heard us talking about it, we had talked about it as a virtual counter. Basically, it was just like the public counter, but it was, you could do it from anywhere outside. We are starting to rebrand that to SEEDRA e-services as some of our systems and products are now going to become county-wide, that it made more sense to do something that sounded a little more all-encompassing for the entire county. So we did rebound that webpage. We've added in a check-in process. We did a substantial update to our GIS and property information. Not only is it near normal zoning information, we were able to collect the tax collector, the recorder clerks, the assessor information. All of that now can be found in our parcel information lookup. We added a new permit guide, which we'll be demonstrating here shortly. Expanded our electronic payment options. We've automated our building inspector routes and our field inspection reports. That has been done in building for some time now. Engineering is also now going to be picking that up. And then we've expanded our electronic plan check. In addition, one that is not specifically listed on there is our e-permits, and that actually went live for planning last Monday. So now you can file all of your permits for planning, or nearly all of them electronically from anywhere, at any time, make the payments, and start the process. One of the primary reasons that we really wanted to do this, in addition to just providing better customer service to our clients, was to just gather data better. We really wanted to know what we were working on, how long has it taken us to work on it, and really what were some of the key questions and issues that our clients had so that we could just better address them as we go forward. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to our IT team, because in all honesty, we could not have done this without them. When SEEDRA came up with what we thought were some pretty crazy ideas, like, hey, let's do a chatbot, we contacted our IT department, and without fail, they said, that is a great idea and we're here to help. And they have been a partner in this all the way through it. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mike Campbell, who's going to give you a little bit of background about what they had worked on, and then we're going to go through some demonstrations of what is available today.
All right, thank you, Shawna. Thank you for your time. My name is Mike Campbell with our Information Technology Department. So as Shawna said, this has been a great partnership between IT and SEEDRA. Some of the ideas that they brought to us, we've been able to fully develop them and really build out this digital voice assistant. So I'll talk a little bit about what we've done with this and some of the ideas that SEEDRA brought and how we have deployed it for them. Just a little background on the digital voice assistants. These are the Amazon Alexa's smart speakers, or the Google Home smart speakers that I see advertised all over the place now. A lot of people have them in their home. You can put these on your smartphone or your tablets also as an application that you would download. You know, you can ask them questions, turn your lights on. They're really expanding as far as what their capabilities are. You can connect them to your sprinkler systems, or your, you know, even your ovens, your washer-dryer. There's about 66 million of these users right now in the US. The market's exploding for these. It's growing substantially year over year. As I mentioned, Amazon and Google really have the majority of the market right now. Amazon has about 65,000 specific applications now available through their store. So you can have applications connect your bank accounts, even connect to your new cars, your, as I mentioned, your devices at home. So those will continue to grow like they did when smartphones first came out and were growing all these, and we have millions of applications now you can put on your smartphone. This market will continue to grow like that. We really wanted to be part of that, so we developed the Placer Chat for that. But in addition, we've also deployed this to our website. So through the SEEDRA webpage, you can actually go onto the website and have all the same functionality. You can put in questions, ask questions either by typing these in or using the microphone on your computer, and we'll demonstrate that in a couple of minutes here. Just to note, one of the things that we want to do beyond just SEEDRA for the county is allow departments to go in and put in their own questions and answers. So we've developed our own administrative portal, so non-IT people within departments can go in and actually add new questions for their department. So, you know, maybe, how do I find the libraries? What hours are libraries open? How do I apply for alfresh benefits? Departments will be able to go in and put those questions and answers in themselves through this administrative tool that our team here has built. And again, we'll have restrictions and security built around this so that departments see only their, and can only affect their questions and answers. And we built a lot of analytics into that admin tool, so you can go and see what kind of questions are being asked, how many are being asked on days of particular timeframes, like in the last week or last month. And you can, so if you see a particular question that's being asked a lot, you can refine that and add additional information if it's going to help users get to where they're trying to get to. And it also gives, if you want to look at the particular conversation the user had with the chatbot, you can actually see the questions and answers that were, we can look at that through the admin tool. So I'll turn this over to Ben and Rana, and they're going to give us a demonstration of this. We'll do a demonstration on the iPad using the Google Assistant, and then we'll also do the Alexa, and then we'll show you the web interface. Are there any questions on? Okay, I'll turn over to them. Okay, we'll be switching over to the iPad here at the podium. There we go. Sorry. I'm Ben Palacio with Information Technology Department. Before we get started, I just wanted to explain one thing. When I first saw this or thought of it, there's three things we're going to show you today: Alexa, Google Assistant, and the web interface that you saw on your webpage. That first came to my mind as, wow, we have to manage three different things now. The big part about the administration of this is it's one single point of administration for all three, so it reduces the amount of effort that the county staff have to put into managing the tool. What I'm going to show you here is on an iPad, of course, as Michael mentioned, it works on your phone, on the Echo Dots and the Google Home devices in your homes. Essentially, millions and millions of devices are available with very little effort. So let's begin. Talk to Placer County.
Welcome to the Placer County Chat Assistant. Take a look at some examples of what you can ask me.
How do I schedule an inspection?
For information on how to schedule an inspection, you can call the inspection line at (530) 745-3020, or you can visit the Citizen Access Portal on the county website. Is there anything else I can help with?
So let me just describe what happened after we asked our question. It gave us an answer. Below that's a card that's structured with a button that we can actually press. This will take us directly to the Citizen Access Portal online, where we can actually continue to schedule an inspection. The real amazing part about this is that from not understanding how to schedule an inspection, I'm right at the point where I can go and schedule the inspection in under a minute. I don't have to sit in front of the computer and search for information, which is there, but this is much quicker. And of course, if we get here by mistake, or we're done, we can close the window and it takes us right back to the Google Assistant application. From here, I'm going to ask it about the zoning for my property. Two things here. One is that it's important to understand that it actually goes to the GIS system and pulls out accurate zoning information for my property. The big problem is, it needs to know where the property is, so the system's smart enough to come back and ask me for a street address. Let's go ahead and show you that. What's the zoning for my property?
Can I have the street address?
2700 Bell Road.
This address appears to fall within the commercial plan development zone. Would you like to look up another address?
No, thank you.
Can I assist with anything else?
No, not at the moment.
Thanks for chatting with Placer County.
Now I'm just going to show you one briefly on Alexa to explain how it's using the same data, so I'm going to ask the same question I asked on Google about how to schedule an inspection. Ask Placer County.
Welcome to the Placer County Chat Assistant. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about our county resources.
How do I schedule an inspection?
For information on how to schedule an inspection, you can call the inspection line at (530) 745-3020, or you can visit the Citizen Access Portal on the county website. Can I assist you with anything else?
No, thanks.
Thanks for chatting with Placer County.
Now I just want to point out one other thing here, is that you don't see the button or the card on the Alexa platform. Unfortunately, Amazon has not provided that functionality yet in their tool. The good news is, we've built it into the dataset, so it's all there already, as you saw on Google Assistant. So when Amazon comes back and decides to put a button there, we can go add that within a day or two. It's not a huge effort to accomplish that. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rana Colta, who's going to show you the web user interface. It'll just take us a second here to get set up.
Maybe while you're getting that set up, Shawna, a quick question for you. Yes, case scenario, all the information is supplied on first submittal, everything's What is this going to do to the speed of the permit process? I realize it's going to make it more convenient, it's going to save me a trip up here. Is it going to get me my permit any faster?
I think that, back to how you preference that, if the submittal's perfect, if you've got everything in there, then no, it doesn't change the actual time, it still requires a good, complete application. What it does is, it saves the time of having to come here to submit that application. It also saves the opportunity of not having to write that check. You can pay with credit cards or other e-payments. So you can submit this from anywhere in the world. You don't have to be in Placer County to submit your application, but at the end of the day, it still requires a complete application so that you go into the system and then start that. We're going to talk about the streamlining of that review a little bit later.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, I'm Rana Colta. I am with the ITD. And as you've seen, you can talk to Placer County Chat through Alexa, Google Assistant, or the web user interface. And I'm now going to currently demo the user interface portion of it. It is currently hosted on our Community Development Resource Agency website. And to locate the bot, you'll have to hover over the I-12 menu item and click on the Placer County Chat link. This will redirect you to the Placer County Chat webpage, where it gives you a little bit more information of what the county chat has to offer, in that it is currently limited to basic Community Development Resource Agency information. And to load the chatbot, you simply click on the Placer County Chat link over here, or on the virtual assistant. Once the Placer County Chat Assistant loads, you can ask your question either by typing it as a message, or by speaking through your microphone. And also, this speaker icon over here unmutes the bot and allows it to talk back to you with its voice. I'll now demo speaking through my microphone. What is the minimum pipe depth requirement? What is the minimum pipe depth requirement? Okay. I wonder if the microphone's not working because it's hooked up to the HDMI. I'll just type it in as a question.
For example, sewer or electrical?
So it'll come back with asking me what kind of pipe do I want, so I'm going to say water pipe.
The minimum depth requirement is 12 inches of cover measured from the top of the pipe.
Also, if for any reason you're not sure what to ask a chatbot, or how to phrase your question, you can simply say or type FAQ.
Please select a category below for specific questions, or simply ask your question.
So the chatbot will respond back with some options of what questions you can ask. And let's say my next question's about buildings, and maybe I want to know more about building permits and fees. The chatbot will respond back with the answer, and the card over here contains more information as Ben talked about. And it is a great feature because it reduces the amount of time I have to spend on the website trying to look for the answer. And so by clicking on the permit guide portal button over here, I'll be redirected to the online permit guide portal, and I'll have Shawna help me walk through it and show you a demo of that.
So as Rana said, this is the permit guide. So this is where you have a good idea, but you don't really know where it can go, or how it works, or... So the opportunity here is through just a few clicks, you can find out exactly where you can have the business, or a single-family home, and what permits are required. So I typically do some kind of a food shop, so in this case, we'll do donuts. So if we open up a donut shop, the next one starts to ask you, is it an industrial? Is it retail? It wants to know a little bit more about what you're doing. So in this case, we'll do a retail shop. Now this opens up the map to the county. You can see where it's green, that means it's permitted or allowed by right. The yellow or golden rod is where there's some conditional requirements, and the gray is where it is not prohibited. So just click on a parcel. You continue to ask a few questions, new construction, 1,500 square, 1,000? 1,000's great. Small donut shop. Of course, there'll be a sign, whether you're removing trees or not, so you can know. There'll probably be a little grading. We, of course, are going to need a bathroom and a commercial kitchen. We probably won't need to address county right away. We'll be on local water system. The grading will probably be minimal. What you'll notice now happening on the left-hand side of the screen is it starts to estimate what permits you need, and how much those permits are going to cost. At this time, it is just loaded with the county information, so we don't have the public utility districts or the water agencies. As we become more comfortable with this system, we'll be able to add that information in. One story, just a few more.
1,000 stories.
It's a huge donut shop. No bar, probably a water heater, no electrical sign, and none of the above. You'll be fine. And again, it just continues to tally as you are pulling the information together. At the very end, you end up with a summary, aerial of the shot, zoning information, summary of those permits. And if you keep rolling down a little bit, it actually will provide you with the other districts that you'll need to get additional information from. And then it'll also give you the project details. So this is how you answered those questions. So it gives you a chance to kind of go back and figure out, did I answer them correctly or not? You can then download that, and then you can come to or talk with Placer County about opening that business, or if you have any questions, or if you're feeling really comfortable and really confident, you can go right into our electronic permit system. So as I mentioned, we've had some building permits electronically for a little while now. We actually just launched planning permits on Monday. So far, so good, it looks like. We actually even just walked somebody through yesterday. They were getting pinched for time on a time extension, funny enough. And they, it was, it was quick and easy, and they could do it from anywhere. And in addition to that, be able just to pay online and be able to go through. So the idea again here is just to get people in to doing business with the county easier. Who are we kidding? It's the Amazon generation. Everything is a click and an easy and a delivery the next day. So this is just our ability to kind of keep up with that technology.
The ones where it says apply in person, are those essentially set up where we can go?
We hope so, yeah. I think some permits, maybe just to a point of difficulty, that we may not, or portions will be, but we'll need still some, maybe some meetings or after follow-up on those. But the idea is to get 100% of our permits available online, and to actually accept 100% of our permits should be coming in electronically. I think I mentioned it before, one of the main reasons we wanted to do that was so that we were collecting data better, so that we had, you know, uniform information coming in, and we were able to analyze what it is people are looking for, maybe where the hurdles are, and be able to address those better.
Shawna, you've been kind of addressing the commercial types of things, but residential obviously has the same opportunity to do this.
Absolutely, yeah. So there was actually three portals. One was just for zoning, if you just were looking for zoning information. One was the business, and then one is the residential. So if you go into the residential portal, that one, you can choose single-family, multifamily, and second units. You can go through there, and it will do the exact same thing. It will definitely walk you through what the permit costs are, what the permit needs are to get to that. And then you would be able to launch into the electronic permit system as well.
Also determine if you will need any environmental sorts of things done, permitting costs.
For the electronic permits?
No, just, let's say if I was looking at purchasing a piece of property, and it had the ability to split it, would it tell me if I was going to need some environmental work to be done, at least a review?
Not yet. It's not that sensitive to be able to determine if there's wetlands or slopes or that type of thing on there, yeah. But I think as the technology grows, this is kind of, we call it kind of the first-gen or, you know, SEEDRE Services 1.0. And a lot of that was the limitation on just the technology itself. So I think as technology grows, we'll be able to grow this as well, and be able to add on anything that is, can be geocoded, in all honesty. Anything that can be geocoded can start to be loaded in here.
Because that would be helpful to know that upfront, because I went through that, and I didn't know what extent of environmental work I was going to have to relate to this with, and I kept getting surprised by the county as to what they were going to require from it.
Right.
And that also added considerable amount of cost to it as well. So it would be helpful to know that.
So probably that's a good point to kind of explain the electronic permit side. So when you do submit for an electronic permit, it kind of goes into what we're calling a pre-application. It gives a chance for the technician, or the planner, or whoever's going to be looking at the permit, to kind of go through it and make sure that everything is there and that you've received all the information necessary for a successful application. And then it rolls into an actual application. So there's actually no fees paid at the very beginning, until it's actually accepted as an application with everything, you know, required as part of it, then that's when we would be asking for the fees. So there is this kind of window in time where it is an opportunity to get as much information from you and share that information back with you before the actual permit time box starts. starts.
Had I known the difficulties, and especially the expense going into that, I probably would not have bought the property. Is there a way, if I'm considering a piece of property, to be able to just kinda go in and kind of run that process just to find out exactly what I'm in for?
Absolutely, yeah. Are there any other questions on the e-services? Thank you.
Do you have another question for you? This is really impressive. I mean, this is like light years jump ahead from where we've been, obviously, doing our permitting processes. And I'm curious, how many other counties have implemented something like this?
That is a great question.
Are we on the leading edge of this?
We are on the leading edge. We actually don't believe there is a single other county in the United States at this point that has both Alexa and Google Assist together. We do have a few. There's at least two we know in the state of California that are using Alexa.
Yes.
Yeah. And then, but none that are doing both. So by having both those platforms, and that, you know, it gives us 85% of the market. So that's the technology, I mean, that's the Placer Chat. As far as the permit guide, that one is, there's a few jurisdictions regionally that are using that. Some use it for just business only, some use it for business and residence. Elk Grove definitely uses it for business portal as well. And then, and that one is, it's fairly new company, it's only a couple of years old, but they have been able to implement in other jurisdictions, San Diego being one of their first ones.
But once again, Placer County is leading the way.
We are. I think there's actually a pretty good stat that I just heard. Yeah.
Last month, I met with Google in San Francisco, and they said we're the first county, verbally said, that we're the first county in the state of California that's on the Google platform.
That's great. Congratulations to the IT team for doing this.
It was. We can't say it enough. The partnership with IT was amazing, and it's not over. We're still growing, so. All right. I'm on again.
Let's see, on the GIS mappings, that you have assessor's information and elections in there, I guess GIS mapping, does that include mapping in the incorporated cities?
For the information we have, so assessor information and that, you could, although our GIS doesn't usually pull that up. Right now, if you were to go into any one of these systems, even the Placer Chat, it will let you know that you are, that's within the jurisdiction of Roseville, or they're within the jurisdiction of Rockland, because it's just not data or information that we generally provide. But at least it acknowledges it's in one of those other jurisdictions, and then you would need to go to that jurisdiction for the information. Yeah. All right.
There we are.
Moving on to housing.
Before we move to the next item, we should just open up a public comment, if people wanna provide a public comment on that item.
Good morning, I'm Leslie Warren, Auburn, California. I just was wondering if there was gonna be a feedback loop on this technology program, to find out how many people use it, and a cost-benefit analysis to see if use and expense to implement it meet some good point. But I think we should have a way of monitoring if and how the public responds to it. So that's just my comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fred Waters, and my comment has, I was wondering whether there's a mechanism, once you've entered any information, you can go back and modify it, I assume? And then my next question would be, are there security mechanisms that protect a person putting the information in for that information not to be manipulated by another individual? For example, a issuance of a, like a code number or whatever, that they've completed the application, and here's your code number. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Can I give us a quick answer?
Specifically for the security, we don't, as far as the comments or questions that are asked, we don't record any information. We actually are not provided that by Google or Amazon. The questions that come in are anonymous, so we actually just get the text of the question, how would I apply for a permit? And then we do have through the admin tool, as a demonstrator, we can look at how many queries are coming in, how much the public is using it, and we can put those statistics together by months, days, you know, or by particular question groupings.
With the permit guide and with the e-permits, all of that is tracked, so that we can determine how many people are using it, how they're using it, what questions they're asking. And we can also run that on weekly, monthly. It has been now up and out about six weeks, so it's really public at this point. So we are tracking, just to see what that user level is, and can, you know, provide that feedback as we go, as we start to get more under our belts and be able to see what that looks like. As for the e-permits, it does require you to sign into an account, so it is your account, and it is your information, so that information would remain secure.
Shawna, how are you promoting this to the community?
It's a great question, too. And we actually have our PIO's office here, Scott Sandow. We are pulling together, we did kind of what we've been calling kind of a soft release, getting this out there and using it and talking to the public at presentations such as this. We did just go live with a new webpage and some marketing materials. You'll start to hear more, you'll start to hear the press releases going out. We definitely wanted to get the bugs worked out first, and give it some time before that happens, but you will start to hear more through the media, and just pushing through the county's channels, the availability of this. And then I will, in the next presentation, actually show you that webpage, and talk a little more about it, too.
So I guess now that we've finished the public comment, we can go ahead and formally start our 10-20 items? The housing program update? Take her away, Shawna.
Sure. So I think it's been a little while since I've been to you with kind of a comprehensive update of how things are going with housing. There has been quite a bit going on, and I think this is a good opportunity to kind of bring it back to you as we start to kind of launch into the next phase of the housing programs. So I think everybody's familiar that, you know, statewide, we are suffering a housing shortage. We have essentially been suffering this since the 90s. We talked about it's been a 30-year kind of situation, almost 40 years, that kind of we got ourselves into this. We've definitely had some peaks in the early 2000s, but on average, we have been underperforming for decades. And there's, you know, a lot of theory about why that might have happened during those years. You know, we, there was some tax laws that changed, that made investments into, say, higher-density housing kind of change. And then we just had some pretty deep recessions, where the housing has just never really caught back up. So some background over what's been going on the last couple of years, and I think it has been a little over a year since I've been to you, but just as a good reminder, the CEO's office did establish a multi-departmental housing unit team. This includes both the CEO's office, economic development, county facilities, county public works, myself from Cedra, and Jeff Brown and his staff from the Health and Human Services Department. And the board also approved the first and the second annual housing work plan. So this is our one-year kind of plan of what we're gonna do each year. The third annual work plan is actually being prepared and proposed to the board in August. A number of the items that we're talking about have been on that annual work plan, and so we're looking forward to kind of checking those and being done, and getting on to the next items. Housing studies that we have completed, we did the Strategy and Development Plan, which I'm gonna talk more about. We did just complete the Funding and Investment Strategy. That one will actually be probably going out here in the next two to three weeks, we're just getting it web-ready. And then the Nexus Study for the Affordable Housing Fees were completed. And then there was also an Eastern and Western, there was actually an employer need one for Central as well, but not housing, employer housing needs study. And then the Annual Housing Element Implementation Report, I'm gonna, that's at the end of this, I'll let you know what we submitted to the state for this year on our Housing Element Implementation Progress. We have done four housing surveys. These are, we had used Flashvote for these. We talked, the first one that went out was on housing costs, the second one was on housing types, third one was on second homes in the east county area, and accessory dwelling units. And then we are actually preparing a fifth one right now, and it's gonna be on financing. So we're gonna be asking a few questions about how people think about financing things like a single-family home, an accessory dwelling unit, and, or, you know, buying down first on your home. So hopefully that should be out by the end of this month. The board approved the investment of some affordable housing projects, and we have Schaefer's Mill, that based on that agreement, we're able to be awarded $16 million through the Cap'n Trade Funds. This is up in the Martis Camp area. They also, just Tuesday, actually supported a $7 million contribution to the Placer County Government Center Mercy Housing Project. It was a combination of land and offsetting of fees, contribution of our No Place Like Home vouchers, so the package in its total was about $7 million towards a $37 million project. That's all for just 79 units. Those projects can get pretty expensive. We also are looking at selling some of the county's surplus land. Most recently, the board took action on Sabre City, and this is down out of Roseville. So a lot of different ways that we're trying to figure out how to get, you know, housing started, using different tools, and this is just examples of the last three. We established the Western Housing Stakeholder Group just this last January, and we have continued and will continue this third year of funding into the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation Mountain Housing Council. So the Housing Strategy and Development Plan, this one is kind of the big plan. This is the one that we're trying to set forth that will provide kind of a plan forward for the next five, 10, 15 years on how we'll be able to actually accelerate the development of housing. And the approach was the seven different actions or approaches to getting this plan together. The first one was to first identify what our supplies and needs were, look for these opportunity sites, develop a site evaluation tool, review state housing changes. That is not an easy task. The state is very busy. They've been busy for two years, they're busy this year again. The review other jurisdictions, we really wanted to know what other jurisdictions were doing, that was working for them, and what may be a good fit for Placer County. We looked for recommendations to our housing policies and ordinances, and then, of course, when we finished one through six, we said we really need to know the numbers. And so that's why that one has lagged a little bit, is it didn't get started until January of this year, and we did the Finance and Investment Strategy. So to talk a little bit about our housing capacity, this is, you can see the little map there with all the red. The red actually denotes where housing is allowed. So you can see here in the table, I wonder if this works, it does, the number of units or the housing capacity that we have today, which you can also notice, most of it is in specific plans, subdivisions, and projects. So these are ones that are, I guess you would call them, they're either specific plans that have, you know, are master plans that have been adopted, or tentative maps, so paper lots, that are still working towards becoming actual parcels. For much of the work that we've been looking at, we've been focusing here on the vacant site inventory, these are actual parcels that exist today. So they're ones that we can work with now. The other ones are important, they're our supply into the future, but as we're trying to solve some issues today, it is the vacant site inventory that we've looked closely at. We also looked at what our needs were. The graph here, the blue, this tells you if we continue to grow at the same rate we have been growing over the past 15 years, which is roughly 300 units per year in the unincorporated area, Placer County, we'll build roughly 5,000 units between now and 2040. To achieve our need, based on our employment growth and population growth, we really need to have about 13,000 units. And so that leaves us with a shortage of about 8,000 units between now and 2040. We also looked at what the breakdown of that income was going to be necessary by different sections of the county. And then, this is a new, a little more new from the state requirements. They also want us to look at what our existing needs are. So this is kind of planning forward, and this is what our existing conditions are. So I've been catching them as catch-up and keep-up. So this is what we need to do to catch up, and then the top is what we need to do to keep up. The housing opportunity sites, as we were going through that analysis, looking at all the different properties where housing can go, we did a very laser-focused on those sites where they met funding opportunities. So they were either, you know, good candidates for our tax credits, they were in infill sites, they could address greenhouse gas objectives for the state, or just had, you know, walkability and transit-oriented type designs. So what we narrowed that down to is about 100 sites. We created a tool on the webpage where you can go in and search and look at these. If you click on any one of those little parcels, it'll pop up a little bit of information on those sites. So we also have reached out to many of these property owners, just to gauge their interest in working with the county, because I know not everybody's interested in doing that. And we actually had a pretty robust response of people that are interested in talking more about building housing on their sites. So I think that was a good sign, and we'll be continuing to work with those property owners. State and local housing laws, as I mentioned, the state has been very busy over the last two to three years. So these are just a number of the different laws that have gone into place, more recently are funding opportunities as well. I've broken it down into just to these three categories, you know, financing of affordable housing, we did have the $4 billion bond that passed last year. This will provide for some funding opportunities we haven't seen in years come through the state. So we're excited about those, we'll probably see them rolling out later this fall. There is some new laws that came down facilitating private market housing. There was some pretty substantial changes to the Housing Accountability Act, and density bonus laws, second units, we've already gone in and updated our second unit ordinance to meet those changes, some streamlining opportunities for SEQA. And then the one that we tend to hear more about is SB 35, which does allow for streamlining of local review of housing projects if that jurisdiction is not, annual report is not submitted, and/or is not meeting its goals or objectives. On that one, the Placer County is actually kind of in the middle. The way the law reads is if you're not meeting your housing goals altogether, then pretty much a project can walk in for a ministerial approval, where only 10% of the units are affordable. If you are meeting your housing goals in total, but not meeting your affordable housing goals, then a project can walk in for a ministerial approval, kind of bypassing our discretionary process, but it requires that at least 50% of the units be affordable to the moderate or below. Placer County is at that. We are meeting our overall housing goals, but we are not meeting our low to very low housing goals. So SB 35 does apply to Placer County in that respect. The other is the Increasing Accountability. This is on the county in ensuring that we do maintain a realistic capacity, that we, there is no net loss of our... in ensuring that we do maintain a realistic capacity, that we, there is no net loss of our available sites, and that we do meet our annual reporting. So what came out of all of those studies over this last year, and all the work that we were looking at, was this, what we're calling the Recommendation Categories. And there are six of them. So there are changes, or recommendations, or programs, or projects that are rolling into place as we speak today under these six categories. Go to the next slide, because it kind of lays it out for you a little bit. So this is what we're currently working on today. If you were to go into those reports, there's actually a lot more opportunities, a lot more projects and programs in there. We are taking those today that we feel are going to have the most effect immediately on housing, as well as kind of set the stage and the foundation going forward. So under Policy and Planning, we do have the Housing Element Update. This one is requirement under state law. We will be, we are working currently right now with our regional planning agency, SECOG, to determine what our allocation is going to be. We will kick off that process, and you will be part of that. A lot more probably beginning early of next year in 2020. We did look at our land capacity, and the county did ramp up its legislative advocacy efforts, working very closely with the state to look at measures and laws that are more applicable to suburban and rural counties. Regulatory Relief, the Housing Code Update. This is where we're looking at our zoning and our design standards, and trying to figure out ways where we can maybe reduce some of the timelines and the constraints that may be getting to the development of housing. We do have a number of general plan policies, community plan policies, state law requirements that really support housing in the county. But over the years, tools have been, or ordinances, or standards, or guidelines have been put into place that sometimes just create those constraints to actually achieving our visions and our goals. So this is a good opportunity to kind of go back in, look at where we might be able to streamline those, and get those code changes done. You'll actually be hearing more about that in the next few months. We are looking at more by right opportunities, and then the SEQA streamlining opportunities as well. I talked about the 100 Housing Site Ranking Tool that's under Housing Production and Supply. We're also looking for ways to cut cost of construction. One of the things that we've learned over this last year is, just, well, I think we all knew the cost of construction was going up, the cost of labor was too. A lot of that has to do with the fact we just have a limited pool of people that can, you know, do a lot of this work. So working with the building department, looking at alternative materials that can be used for housing, and trying to reduce the cost of that construction so that the projects can move forward. What we're seeing a lot of is the prefab homes, modular homes, and that type that people are interested in. ADUs and Density Bonus is something else we're looking at to increase our production. And then Streamlining the Process, and this kind of comes back to your original question. Does the electronic e-services platforms allow us to shorten that time from action to, from application to action? This is where we are trying to achieve that. So through the CEDRA e-services, we're hoping that more people will just come in, because they, it's, they can kind of plug and play at their own home. They don't have to wait to come to the counter between eight and five on a Monday through Friday. Reducing the processing time, getting them through the process faster. This was last April, the CEDRA actually held a series of meetings with our developers and our builders to look for where they felt those hurdles were. And we do have a list of items now that we can begin to work on in hopes of trying to streamline that review. And we're also looking at Form Based Code and Design Standards, and we're going to talk about that in the next item, so I'm on that. Preservation and track, or protection, so one of them is we've got about 400 units right now that are deed-restricted, that the county is required to monitor and manage as we go forward. We don't want to lose those. And if we don't do that monitoring correctly, we stand to lose those units. So it's important that we stay on top of those. We're looking at actually a rental registry at this point. But before we get there, we're actually looking at ways to get just more people to be landlords, people that have larger homes, that maybe want to run out a room, or just second homes that they might want to put in more long-term leases. So we're now working with that. Ultimately, I think what we're looking for is more of that rental registry-type of system. And then Amnesty Program, something that allows people to come in and be able to get their unpermitted units permitted, so that they, we know that they meet health and safety standards, and then they can move forward with hopefully making those available people that are looking for housing. And then Local Funding. We are, as I mentioned, we are just wrapping up our Financing and Investment Strategy. It is, just using the example of the Mercy Housing Project here in the Government Center, it is not, for the faint of heart, getting into a financing program for affordable housing. It's very expensive, and it does require generally local contribution. That doesn't necessarily mean it has to come from the local jurisdiction, but most times it does. But it does come, not all of it can be financed through conventional types of funding. So we talk to, you know, the public a lot about what we can and what we can't do as the government. There are things that we control, and there's just things we don't control. We generally don't control market forces. We don't generally control construction costs or labor shortages. That being said, as I mentioned, in construction costs and labor shortages, where we can affect that by looking at alternative materials that could be used for development of housing, we want to make sure that that's a tool or an option that somebody can use. We do control zoning. We do control the review process, and we do control fees. So those are the things that we really are paying attention to and looking for ways where we can make a difference in the construction of housing.
Question, Sean?
Yeah?
The third-party plan check, will that still be available through the e-services?
Thanks. I think it's a really good idea to check into that and look at that. I think it's not currently listed as our e-services, but it's a service that we'll continue to provide. And if it's something we can hook up to the e-services, it makes sense. Yeah, absolutely. So this is the one I told you, the Housing Code Update. This is the one where we're doing a deeper dive into our ordinances and our standards to look for where we can provide regulatory relief to the development or the construction of housing. This, we set out some objectives for this project. One is, of course, to increase availability of a mix of housing types, reduce vehicle miles traveled, bring the county housing policies into conformance with state laws, implement general plan policies, align the, and community plan and area plan policies as well. Align the Placer County General Plan, Zoning Code, and Design manuals with the recently adopted specific plan, community plans, master plans, area plans. There's been a lot of really good plans adopted lately with very current, up-to-date standards, zoning standards and design standards. But the county as a whole hasn't had that kind of refresh. And so this is kind of an opportunity to bring some of the areas outside of those specific plans or master plans into more conformance with the ones that have been recently approved. And then, the board actually did adopt a strategic plan. And item number two on their strategic plan was to support new housing construction that provides a mix of housing type for people of all income ranges. So we would like to meet that board objective as well. So the Housing Code Update, we are looking at it right now. It is in, it actually addresses a very limited scope. We are looking primarily where multifamily housing is allowed today on commercial and mixed-use, or multifamily residential areas. So those little blue circles that you're looking at there, those are a half-mile areas around a bus stop. So we're also looking at transit-oriented areas. So from a land perspective, whether it's acres or parcels, we're looking to do a lot with a little. Now, based on the county's existing density standards, we actually think we can do a lot with a little. We don't need to go in and actually increase density at this time if we take advantage of some of the other tools that are available. We may be having a different discussion with you as we get further down into our analysis. But at this point, it does look like we'll be able to meet our future demand through 2040 utilizing the lands that are currently available for commercial, mixed-use, multifamily, and to some degree, single-family residential, particularly those single-family areas that are within transient or walkable areas.
Shauna, I have a question on that map.
Yeah?
I didn't see any references. You look to the west side, the west end on Vineyard for multifamily. See any colors of anything in that area?
Yeah, we can update with the newest, because there are a few mapped lots in that area. At this point, though, we're looking at, as I mentioned, the existing parcels. So Placer Vineyards at this point is, although mapped, they're not, they still have a pretty heavy lift with their backbone infrastructure, so it's going to be some time before we'll be able to rely on those.
I'm sorry, I thought it was what you were looking at, that had been approved.
So the Housing Code Update actually just, it really comes down to four components of it, although there's a number of little changes within each of those components. As I mentioned, the first one is to really focus in on our mixed-use and our multifamily areas. The, there will be the recommendation to create a new mixed-use zone district, as well as a new mixed-use land use. Currently, the, all of our community plans, or not all of them, but many of our community plans, our general plan, and for certain, our more current specific plans and master plans, all reference and have processes towards mixed use. But as it stands today, there's really not a direct path for a mixed-use project through our zoning ordinance. So this would provide that opportunity in areas where it makes sense, in those transit areas, on commercial, multifamily areas that are, that were on the map that I highlighted before. The other was to expand our conversations about cluster housing. Again, general plan supports cluster housing, most of our area plans and specific plans do as well. We had a request to look at our planned development process, or policies. The request wasn't really to amend it, or to, or I shouldn't say, to change it. They were, I think, fine with it in general. They said it was hard to use, hard to read, hard to understand. So part of that, this process maybe just to kind of clean that up and make it easier for people to utilize the plan development process, but not necessarily change the objectives of it. The other one was to look at other cluster housing types and provide a process or a streamlined review to get to things like Artist Live, Work Projects, or AgroHoods. And I think one time I was here talking to, it's been a little while, and we've been to the ID Commission as well, to talk about AgroHoods. This is an opportunity to preserve and protect our ag lands while still allowing the housing on those sites. And what it does is it would cluster the housing to one side, and then preserve and protect the best of the ag lands in there. But this same methodology or concept could be used to preserve and protect conservation lands, to set aside for public parks, or any other type of land where we want smaller housing, still to allow those housing densities that are afforded by the land use of the zone in that site, but preserve and protect some of our other important attributes that we want to see in our communities as well. Density and Density Bonus, we did have a recommendation to increase our mobile home parks from eight to 12 units. I think this is one of the only areas where we're looking at actually increasing density as part of this project. And removing some of the density limiting and combining zone districts in those areas where it makes sense, those areas in and around the transit. What we'd probably end up doing is just changing those to a design review, and then allowing through the design review process for those projects to be able to go forward, still meeting county objectives and goals, but just allowing a little more streamlined review process. We need to bring our Density Bonus Ordinance up to consistency with state law. We're looking at expanding our Density Bonus Ordinance in certain areas for mixed-use and multifamily projects. The Tiny Homes on Wheels, this was an item that went to the board last year. They asked that it be brought into this conversation with the environmental document. We'd be looking at allowing those for second homes, I'm sorry, second dwellings, as well as for primary dwellings. Dwelling Unit Equivalency Standards, we already use this in our traffic and our sewer and water. This would allow it also in density and zoning. And then upping to fourplexes and single-family zones in limited areas. So we currently allow a primary, secondary, and a guest home. There's a number of state laws going through right now that are looking at allowing by right up to fourplexes anywhere. This would actually limit it to those areas in and around bus areas, and would allow up to that fourplex, so one more unit on those single-family sites, again, in very limited areas. Design Standards and Guidelines, this is a big part of this code update. The more we can get to clear design standards, the more we can allow by-right projects. So this is something we're going to talk about here in the next item a little bit. But we do, we are working to bring our current multifamily guidelines up to multifamily mixed-use standards. And this also plays into that SB 35 that I talked about. So the state is actually, you know, in some instances saying, "No longer does local jurisdictions have discretion over projects. They get to walk in and do ministerial." That means we can only apply objective standards, height limits, setbacks, sidewalk requirements, street, you know, widths, those types of things. They have to be just standards, no more, no guidelines, no discretion. So by updating our standards, when a project does come in and want to do a ministerial review, we still have those standards to apply, so that our neighborhoods look like we want them to look like. Housing Production and Supply, this is, you know, we're, we really want to accelerate the development of housing. One of the first ones we did with the secondary dwellings, we did actually see those go up quite a bit over the last couple of years. And we plan to do a more marketing campaign and get that information out that you too can have a second unit in your backyard. It's also part of our financing survey that's going out. And then we talked a lot about the e-services and the streamlining. I did want to take a second, and Scott just walked out of the room. If the backroom can click on that e-services website real quickly. So we did just launch this website yesterday, so it's out now. But it does talk about and lead you through how people can get a pool permit from their backyard while they're barbecuing, or, and then you can, but then each of the links into those services are available from this website, linking you directly into those that we just demonstrated as well. Thank you, backroom. Preservation Protection, as I mentioned, we have over 400 deed-restricted units today. We don't want to lose those. We want to, you know, as we can, add more affordable housing to that registry. This is a picture of Quartz Ridge, the last affordable housing project that was built here in 2016. And we're looking forward to Mercy hopefully coming online next year. And we also have Schaefer's Mill, looks like they may be able to break ground starting next year up in Tahoe. And then the Local Funding. So we did complete that Housing Funding Investment Strategy. We kept the years consistent with the demand and the growth. It did estimate existing and future housing needs, estimated the cost of producing those house, housing needs, estimated the production of the cost generally to contribute by local jurisdictions, and then identified funding opportunities and strategies. Sorry, go back. As I mentioned, this was, this was, it's expensive. It's about a $1.8 billion cost to build all the units that are necessary between now and 2040. A good 80 to 85% of that is probably going to be financeable through some conventional financing, which leaves that 10 to 15% where the gap is and where that gap needs to be filled. Many times, those gaps are filled, used to be through redevelopment agencies, through state funding grants. But every now and then, it does require local contribution. And again, I think the Placer County Government Center Mercy Housing was a great example of that, where the county stepped up and did offset some of the costs for the fees to make sure that that was able to happen and close that gap. And then that Housing Work Plan that I did speak of, this is a one-year program. This is a clip just from last year. It is broken up into these four different categories. This is a work plan that's worked on by all six of the housing unit departments. This is a work plan that is actually managed through the CEO's office. Most of what I just talked about earlier is what we're doing here through CEDRA and Planning Services. This is actually a much bigger program and includes HHS as well. And then annually, we do need to submit to the state our Housing Element Implementation Progress. So this is a report that we submitted this year. It's required to be in by April 1st of each year. Just a couple of notable accomplishments that we had in 2020. Just a couple of notable accomplishments that we had in 2018, we were awarded $500,000 for a home grant that will help with first-time home buyers. Plastra County Government Center Master Plan was approved, and actually, since I even typed this up, it, the funding plan was approved on Tuesday. Health and Human Services acquired additional property to provide support of housing. I think I just saw a press release come out a little while ago that they housed their 100th person of homeless or at-risk individuals. And then the board approved the countywide strategies being, housing being the main issue, this is the countywide strategic plan. Then the table actually gives you an idea, the RENA that we are under today, or the regional housing needs allocation, these are the units that we have to track. The 2013 to 2021, we were allocated five, little over 5,000 units. In 2018, you can see what was built during that year, and then the third column provides you a year to date, I'm, or a program to date, total where we're at. And this is what I was speaking of, the county in and of itself is actually meeting its overall housing goals, but because we are short on our low and very low, they don't actually at this point consider moderate in the SB 35 regulations. Then for projects that are wanting to streamline their review, if they want to do 50% affordable in their project, they can bypass any discretionary review and go straight to a ministerial building permit. Next steps for us, we need to complete the housing code update, we need to complete the housing element update by April of 2021, we need to establish an affordable housing program goals, this is where we'll be talking to the board about what are our goals, are our goals to achieve the number of units between now and 2040 for affordable? Is it just the, looking at arena obligation, is it something more similar to what the city of Roseville has looked at, which is a 10% goal? So I think the board needs to kind of weigh in what that goal's going to be, and then from there, we can kind of backfill in what type of funding and programs and things that we'll need to do to support that. We're also going to continue to, to look for, we'll turn over every rock, looking for money to help assist and offset the cost of housing. We need to finalize the affordable housing fee program, and we need support affordable housing development projects as they're going through the process. With that, I will stop.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman? I'm on. Well, I've enjoyed your presentation. It's been an interesting scenario, as you may or may not know. I serve on TRPA governing board representing this county and have for, I guess, 30 years or 40 years or something, it's been a long time. And this is a total departure from all we've had to deal with. We've spent a good deal of the 30, 40 years I've been there in court fighting over what we can do and what we can't do. And after all those years, this last year, we finally got a resolute general plan for the Tahoe Basin that everybody agreed to, the state, California, Nevada, Cali, all the counties around the lake. And we just got it finished, and we were told what we couldn't do and the limitations we had and all that. And now you're, you're coming out with a program for new housing that's about as opposite as could be from what we've been demanded to do by the state of California, for one. And it's kind of interesting to sit here and see us transcending from no more houses or fragile land, keep the land vacant, and I mean, it's just incredible, the drastic change we're going through is, and I'm not exactly sure that we're of a mindset to accomplish it at this point, it's just, I'm, I'm sitting here in a daze because for 40 years, I've been hit over the head by the state of California telling me, you know, less houses, less subdivisions, less land use, open spaces is the thing, we've got to, we've got to protect the environment. And now suddenly, it's, it's, it's got to be a 180-degree shift, and I'm not sure what's necessarily proposing it, other than that there's probably a lot of people out there that need a place to live. And I'm not, and I'm not opposed to them having a place to live, but I'm just, I'm just terribly baffled by the total change in direction that we're headed in now with these types of discussions and planning over what we've had traditionally for the last 40 years or longer. And I'm baffled by it, and I'm not sure how comfortable I am with, with it, you know, there's a lot of people that fought to live in exclusive subdivisions in, in the lower end of the county, you know, there's a lot of them around the lakes and stuff. And now we're, we're essentially saying, oh, it's okay to have people living over your garage and in, in the spare bedroom, you can have rental units in your house. And of course, in some cases, that's all going in direct opposition to the CCNRs that were approved that originally created the subdivision, and so there's, there's still lots of loose ends going. And then automatically on top of that, the state comes along and says, yeah, you can have another unit in your, over your garage now, and, and you can do a lot of steps that you just absolutely couldn't do before. And I guess I, I'm sympathetic to the needs of the people, and I was a building contractor, I liked to build houses, and it was always such a struggle. And now they're telling me, we want you to build more stuff, we want you to add rooms to houses, we want you to intensify the communities. And it's, it's a total change for me, and so I'll have to confess, I'm struggling with, not that I'm opposed to what you're outlining here, but I'm struggling with this dramatic change in philosophy that we're going through right now, and it's, and it's, it's, it's going to take me personally a little while to adjust to it because we just spent almost 40 years finally getting a community plan, a general plan approved basin-wide at Lake Tahoe in four, five counties and two states. And we've just finally got one that everybody agreed on, that set limits to development and housing and so forth. And now the state of California is essentially coming back to us and saying, this is now what we want you to do, which is a total departure from what we've been forced to accommodate through lawsuits and, and, and struggles with various state agencies. And so it's, you'll have to forgive me, I am, I'm going through a shock treatment here that's, it's hard to deal with. I, I'm just, I'm just not sure how to, how to, how to, how to absorb it all because it's, it's, it's 180 degrees in the different directions from what we've had to deal with since the 1960s at Tahoe, for example, and everywhere. We've had nothing but negative response to growth traditionally. I mean, that's just been the philosophy from everywhere. And now suddenly, we, the green light's on, and we've got to look after these other people, which I'm sympathetic to, but there's, all the zoning and the general plans to this point didn't accommodate that. They were, oh no, you want to have 200 units on that lot, no, we're not going to give you 200, that's, that's, it costs too much, too many people, we'll give you 120, and, and okay. And that's sort of been the philosophy for 40 years. And now all of a sudden, we're saying, no, we don't want you to do 200 units, we want you to do 350 units on that lot. And then, and it's just, it's a little unnerving because we're not changing the highway structure that much or the transportation structure, we've got utility needs that have to meet all that, I don't know if we have enough electricity for those people, or water, or sewer capacity, but all of a sudden, it's okay now. And so I have to apologize because I'm struggling with this massive transition we're being asked to go through almost overnight. And I, I'm not, I'm certainly not speaking against what you're doing because you're doing your job and it looks like you're doing a good job. It's just the goals and objectives that suddenly have changed for our world, or at least this portion of it. And I'm not exactly sure I'm comfortable with it just yet, I, I know that I'm going to get beat up badly. We're going through, we had an all-day meeting yesterday at TRPA at Lake Tahoe over this very issue, trying to figure out how we can tweak what we just finished. After 30 years of haggling, we got a community plan for the whole Tahoe Basin, two states and five counties, we finally got it done, and we've got it approved by everybody. And now we're told it's not adequate, we don't have enough places for people to, working people to live and, and get to work. We don't want them commuting anymore, we don't want them on the highway. So it's, it's pretty darn frustrating to, to sit here and suddenly think you're at a basketball game and it turns out to be a football game or something. But anyway, I'm not, I'm not speaking against what you're doing, I'm just saying that as a county, here we are trying to do the right thing again, and we're marching, kind of marching to order some Sacramento, which is a little bit baffling because their goals and objectives may not be exactly the same as ours are as a county, but, but their grandfather, they get to be boss, I guess. But anyway, I'm not going to go on any longer, and I apologize for putting you all through this, but it's, it's pretty, pretty frustrating to sit here after being brainwashed for so many years that we've got to protect the environment, and we've got to protect the countryside and not overcrowd it, and now we're suddenly, we're going to reverse that whole process that we've been dealing with for 40, 50 years, and we're, and been told we're doing it wrong. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else coming?
Well, I think the big question to follow that up, as you're right, Larry, is infrastructure. Can it support all of it we're now being charged to develop? You mentioned it already, I mean, water, sewer, I think the big thing is roadways too, or can they accommodate the additional traffic that's going to come from these kinds of densities? So I, I, you know, I, that's a big question to me. I think infrastructure is so expensive today, any underground work, roads, whatever, it's derailed a lot of projects. When they've gone out to pencil out the cost of infrastructure, it's just, it's stopped them in their tracks. I think that's one of the things that we're seeing a lot of extensions of projects now that have been coming before us, it's related to them penciling this out, and it doesn't work because of the, a lot of times, it's because of the infrastructure costs, so that's going to be a real challenge. And I'm just wondering, I've got a couple of questions for you, Shawna. I'm wondering if, as you're kind of looking at the, at the inventory out there, potential areas that have not submitted any plans at this point, have you really looked at what it would take from an infrastructure standpoint? Roadways, again, water, sewer, those sorts of things to accommodate it, because that's going to be a big component of that, of, as to whether it's really feasible on some of these properties to develop if, if providing those kinds of utility needs are just not going to work.
To the greenfield areas, no, we have not looked out at those. As I mentioned, we are really focused in on the existing parcels that exist, that are there today, particularly those parcels that are in and around, those parcels that are in and around where we've already invested infrastructure, where there is roads and water and sewer and transit and those types of things. So they're vacant parcels or underutilized parcels in areas where those services are already there. That doesn't mean that improvements don't need to be, still be made in those areas. In talking with some of the property owners that are in, right in downtown areas, they may be 500 feet from, you know, a sewer line, they need to pull that sewer line, it'll kill the project, you know, just with that cost alone, even though they're, they're, you know, walking distance to a bus stop. So we've been really focusing more on the existing parcels, not, not future greenfield areas.
The, we're hearing from developers and builders that to do the, you know, the lower end of the product type, that it just doesn't pencil for them to do that. And so you're talking about grants and other types of processes to get that accomplished. What I'm wondering is, whenever there's a grant, I would suspect that it requires it to be done by prevailing wage. Is that a, is that a yes?
Yeah.
And so that just, that just raises the cost of that project. So to try to create an affordable housing, again, for the lower end of the market, it's just going to be, it's going to be astronomically expensive when you really look at the actual dollars that are applied to it, because I'm just thinking about the Mercy project, is, think about that, the $37 million to build that project for just 79 units, that's $468,000 per unit, that is insane, go out and build a house for that. So, and I assume a lot of that is related to the prevailing wage, I mean, I don't want to say that's all of it, but it's, it's a big piece of that, that adds a lot of cost to it. So I, I guess what my question is, is also just a, I guess a statement, is that it's going to be really difficult to produce a, that segment of the market at a cost that really makes sense.
So the, yeah, and, and the finance strategy outlines a little in more detail, so the, the typical gap, but for a low-income unit, so if, you know, you build a market rate unit, whatever, you got to buy down to make it affordable rents or for sale, that gap runs about $100,000 for a low income and about a, almost $200,000 for a very low income. So that's the gap we're trying to fill. And typically, those are, we are going after public funds, so anytime you use a public fund, generally a prevailing wage is required for those. But other things that we are looking at is private funding, you know, to try to figure out ways where we can partner with our employers and our institutes and our agencies where that funding can be pulled together in some form of a trust that then can be used to help offset that. The intent is not to get around a prevailing wage, everybody, or, you know, has a, you know, or needs to earn a fair wage, the idea is to try to figure out the, reduce the, the constraints to the construction of housing. So where we can do that, that's what we're trying to look for.
One last question, and it's not for you, please. I have to tell you, I am extremely frustrated to hear that there is a group that is challenging the government center EIR. They're saying that it is not going to stop the Mercy project, but from my perception it is because the EIR had to address that project, for the whole government center had to address it because there were mitigations that were required that needed to be dispersed through the whole government center, not just specific to that particular area. And so it, it is now being held up, the Mercy project is now being held up because of this lawsuit, which, you know, I'm making more of a statement than I'm actually saying a question, but I'll ultimately get to a question. This irritates the heck out of me because we need housing so desperately, and this group is so short-sighted to go out and do this crap, sorry, that's the way I see it. So my question is to you, because this group is out promoting the fact that it's, you know, this isn't going to stop it, is it stopping?
So I'm hesitant to say too much about it because it is a pending lawsuit.
It's a lawsuit, I know.
But I will say that the project itself is dependent on the greater master plan approval, including the design guidelines, development standards, and the density bonus for the project. Those are all in the greater master plan approvals, so they are very much tied together.
It's all tied together, right. Thank you.
Anyone else? Shawna, a question for you. When we put together fees and plans for some of these housing fixes, do we look at, like, I, I know, a while back, we were talking about a $5 a square foot fee to go towards affordable housing. So, I mean, simply there on a 3,000-square-foot house, you're upping the cost by $15,000. How many people does that kick out of the market and now put on the, I need help with affordable housing list versus, versus people who are already on the list that it puts into houses? Because it seems to me that, that, that we're creating more customers with that fee than we're, we're serving.
So just a little background on the, the fee, so there's a couple of policies in the general plan that on certain projects, not all projects, they have a requirement to construct a 10% affordability. So in specific plans, there's a 10% requirement, and then on projects that are general plan amendments, increasing density. So if you're going from low density to medium density, or industrial to residential, but it's a general plan amendment that would increase the density, you would have an obligation to, to construct the 10% affordability requirements. For those obligations, you have a, you have a lot of options, actually. You can construct it onsite, you can construct it offsite, you can do acquisition. You can construct it onsite, you can construct it offsite, you can do acquisition, and you can donate land. And one of the other options is you can pay a fee in lieu of having to construct those, meeting that obligation. And so that's where that fee is coming from. The $5 was the fee that is being considered for those projects that may want to pay that fee. But that does add costs to the overall construction of that project.
So even with the actually constructed, are we looking, though, at what that's doing to the cost of the housing for everybody else? And like I say, are we able to quantify that, well, we create 10 houses over here that meet the affordable criteria, that we're not creating 20 customers who now need assistance?
That's exactly how the fee was generated, is we determined what that cost was. So we have quantified what that cost is for the construction of that or buying down that gap of those affordable units.
We're buying down the gap, but are we creating a larger number of people who potentially need assistance getting housing because we've increased the cost of it?
Some might want to consider that, yeah.
There's no getting around that.
Right now in Placer County, there's really just, there's not that many projects. I think there was all of five projects in the last six, seven years that had that obligation for general plan amendments. They're generally the higher end, 800 to $1 million homes that are being built. So they weren't being built at a moderate rate or less to begin with. They're larger homes that would not be affordable to those that are generally looking for that type of housing anyways. But it, I mean, there's no doubt, it adds costs to the construction of housing.
Anyone else? All right. I guess with that, we can open it up to public for question or comments?
Jeff Short with the North State Building Industry Association. I should have got up the last one as well, so I'm thankful to have a second chance to just say thank you to Shawna and Sidra, County IT, and really the county as a whole for the...
Not to cut you off, Jeff, but real quick, so do we have a timer going? All right. So you've got three minutes, you're familiar?
Yes, I understand, no problem. It shouldn't take that long at all. I just wanted to thank them for the customer service, pro-business mindset that they're bringing to the county, to not only the process, as we saw more in the last presentation, but in this one, to the policy side, that that is going to go a long way to attracting the home builders and developers to the county to build the type of housing that we're all looking for, for the residents, current and future in the county. Commissioner Nader, you hit the nail on the head. We are in desperate need for housing. And because of some of the regulations and things that we've talked about, mostly that have come up with the state, it's up to the county to find these ways, these customer service oriented ways, to try to make housing more feasible and more affordable across the spectrum of affordability to home buyers. And so again, I just want to say thank you again to Shawna and Sidra for their efforts in that respect. I think they could be a model to the state itself and other counties up and down the state. Thank you.
Hi. Sandy Harris, Granite Bay. I agree with several of you commissioners who have brought up some, I think, valid points. The reason I came up today, because when I looked on the internet, there was a sliding scale and it was for financing. And I wasn't understanding what it said and I don't see it in any of the paperwork. But it seemed to be putting a fee on houses. If you build a house that was between 200 to 300, you paid this much more, kind of what you were saying. It wasn't broken down to square footage. And it was quite exorbitant, I thought. And I agree, we're taking away the ability of people who have saved a long time and been thrifty and now want to upgrade their housing situation, and you're making it really, you're creating another area that they can't afford it. A lot of this, I think, to address what Commissioner Sevenson, I think it's a knee jerk reaction to political correctness, that everybody's sitting down in that assembly and they pass one bill after another and they've put so many mandates on building and what's required that they're pricing everybody out of the housing situation. So we need to look at the state of Jefferson, I think, and get out of California.
Thank you, Sandy.
Good morning. My name is Mike Lindberg, resident of Auburn. And I too would like to commend the work done on the new housing element. It looks like a lot of the positive steps in the right direction. As an architect and planner, being in the business for over 30 years, also familiar with the issues in the Tahoe region, as well as Placer County in particular, all I can say is, any move towards higher density, transit oriented, mixed use development is a positive move. It actually, counter to perhaps an intuitive mindset, actually reduces the need for increased transportation networks. The sustainable design practices reduces the need for heavier infrastructure development, in terms of energy use, in terms of water use, et cetera. So totally positive direction. I would also say, I think it's 10 years behind the curve, if not 15. SECOG, when they initiated the blueprint process back in the early 2000s, and Placer County's even adopted the 10% rule for affordable housing for low and, lower income people, you had a slide right up there that showed a woefully short of that goal you've come. If you would have actually adopted this policy 15 years ago, I'd say you might have a chance. Now it's time to play catch up. So to your point, Mr. Sevenson, I know Tahoe region has particular challenges for conservation and open space. But I would also say again, the density argument in terms of the people per acre, not necessarily the amount of cars you can park on an acre, but the residents living in an acre who can walk to services will actually reduce transportation needs and make it a more sustainable, open space conversation mindset. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Leslie Warren, Chair of the Alliance for Environmental Leadership. The Alliance for Environmental Leadership has done, just released, Phase Two of our citizen initiated Smart Growth Plan. It focuses on housing and jobs. And that, I had some questions for Shawna. If you just look at the county's proposed Sunset Area Plan, there's going to be 78,000 workers in that project. And housing to accommodate those workers isn't reflected either in Sunset Area Plan or in the housing plan that the county's developing here. And I think what's missing in this whole housing picture is connecting a jobs and a housing balance in the county so that the people that least can afford it are not the ones that are commuting. Because you may know that the median price of a home in Placer County is $570,000. If you look at Western Placer County, the affluent families there, dual income families are making $114,000 with their combined income. They can't even afford the median priced home unless they have $270,000 of equity to bring in to purchase that project. So the housing that is online in Placer County is on such an incredible disconnect from the income of the people that live in Placer County and the income of people that will be working in the jobs that Placer County is proposing to create, particularly in the Sunset Area. There was a slide up there, it's hard to respond to the slides because, you know, I can't, I have notes on each one, but they're not in front of me now. But you were saying that we're going to need 13,000 units by 2040. But the California Housing Finance Agency, looking at Placer County, says that we're going to need 6,300 units per year in Placer County. So I don't know where you're pulling your numbers, but they don't jive with the California Housing Finance Agency in any way. Maybe that's two years, the next two years. But the problem is that the housing that's being permitted is housing that's low density sprawl, contributing to the cost of housing. For you to say that the county's going to have an increase in density up to a fourplex and then to do that to accommodate bus transit, in our citizen initiated plan analysis, that's much, much too low a density to support any form of bus transit. So again, there's another disconnect that I don't, I want to, I know we're going to, Shawna and I plan to meet in the future to discuss this. But there's some significant differences that our plan and the county's plan have percolated to the top. And just in general, I think that we should also be thinking about climate as we talk about any development for housing. And also think about that what we're comfortable with envisioning at this point in time, you know, with our demographic, I mean, we're 50, 60 here. Jeff, you might be younger. You know, people in the future, the people of the future don't want the same housing footprint that we enjoy. They're going to want those denser communities that are, you know, we're talking, it's hard to imagine in Placer County, but with the population that's coming here and the climate impacts that we can avoid by doing truly high density.
Leslie, you are out of time.
I am out of time.
Can you wrap it up, please?
I will wrap it up.
I'll let you finish up here, but...
I've asked, you know, I've asked that, Sheri, that all these, that each of you be afforded the opportunity to review this housing plan. I think you'll find it interesting. It's a comparable analysis, but we've taken it from, taken a different path to it and the results are significantly different. But I think the thing that's most relevant is that 81% of the people that live in this county are unable to afford the cost of the average home, which is $570,000. So developers are building for this small segment of people and they're not building for the people that we live, that live here and for our children, my daughter just moved back, for our children that would like to come home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Veronica Blake, Placer Community Foundation. First, I just think Shawna's been doing an excellent job. She, you know, she's really on it and we should all just acknowledge her for that. Second, I think it would be helpful for us to look at the migration data. I talked to SECOG last year about it and I think the concern of adding on cost to the homes that are not affordable to subsidize the homes that will be are easily absorbed by folks that are migrating here from other real estate markets where they have an enormous amount of equity coming and they're buying homes at a lot less expensive price. So I think it would be just additional information and be helpful to dispel myths about that by looking at the actual migration data and understanding where people are coming from. Because they're not all homegrown here. And then the last comment I'd make is sort of to what the architect who spoke said, you know, affordable housing advocates have been working in Placer County for the last 25 years. And it's very sad to see that the policies that really we need to take bold action on now, if we had done that when the advocates were doing that years ago, we just wouldn't be in this mess. Tahoe wouldn't be in this mess. And I understand that it's not fun to think that the state is going to tell us how we need to do things, but we weren't doing the right things ourselves. So someone's got to help us sort of blaze the trail here to making sure that there's housing available for everyone. So I want to thank you for giving so much attention to this issue as a commission. It's a really, really important priority in our community. Every day we see families struggling to make their ends meet and the work that you're doing and the policies that you'll set going forward are truly going to make an impact in lives 50, 100 years in the future. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. And I guess, we want to take five? Five minutes? Or we want to just keep going? Shawna, let her rip.
Hopefully this one will be much quicker and just a little bit of fun as we go through it. So as I mentioned, we're, as part of the housing code update, we are going to be also updating our current community guidelines as they relate to mixed use and multifamily. So this is a visual preference survey. And so there's really no right or wrong answer at this point. There's not a need for consensus. It's just, you know, what do you, you know, really don't like or what you really do like? In full disclosure, our consultant who is working on this, his name is Michael Dyatt of Dyatt and Batia out of Sacramento, or out of San Francisco. They are the firm that also prepared the Tahoe Basin Area Plan standards. He is watching. So you can say hi to Michael if you'd like to, but as he is paying attention to your conversations, to the comments that we may receive, he will be pulling that information together and preparing the draft design standards. And then we will bring those back to you for more of a conversation about, you know, getting around actual adoptable standards and guidelines. So for right now, it's just, let's look at some pictures and let's just kind of get an idea of, you know, what really should be or what we need to be considering as part of designs in our, in our mixed use of multifamily and maybe what is not on our favorites list. So let me find my glasses again. Let's just go on over to here. So for some residential neighborhoods, we would like to understand a little more about some of the street signage that you would like to see for our higher density residential. So the first row parking carports in front, parking garage, carports in front, parking lots on the side, or front parking with parking in back. I mean, is there, kind of in general, I think this is just kind of an open conversation. Is there anything up there that maybe you just don't want to see as part of standards, would not want to consider if somebody, say, walked in through the front door and wanted to pull a building permit and we were applying objectable standards? Are there any up there that you just know, you just would like not to see as part of theirs?
I would have to say parking in front. I mean, the others look certainly much more appealing than that one, at least for me.
So the first one, the park with the carport?
I would not support it.
Any other comments?
Anybody else have any strong feelings about any of those?
Well, I look at the upper left where you have the garages underneath, and that's a carport in front. I think I find that sort of, having your front door come in through your garage is probably not that hospitable.
Carports maybe in back would be something?
Yeah, I think having, having street parking is not great, but it's for guest parking, I would think it's got some acceptability if you have the garage space or parking space for the resident behind and underneath or however. So if you had that in combination, that would probably be better.
Right.
I guess I like the bottom row, second one in, better than I do the one on the right bottom row. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. So, and I think the bottom one, we're looking a little bit more at those building masses in the garages as well. This is always a little bit tricky because it's just kind of based on those photos and how they're taken. But, you know, the first one has that building mass set very forward, up against the edge. Some of it, the second one is recessed, you kind of have the variation out there. The third one in, mass set forward but kind of broken up. And then the garage setback or landscaping yards. Are there, are there any of those in there that, you know, as part of design standards you would not want to see as part of this or any modifications on those?
One of the issues that I think that we are facing in the foothill region and up the mountains is, you know, the fire issues. And so, you know, the buildings, and you increase the density, particularly if you've got forest around it, then the insurance is going to become a difficult thing for the people that are living there. But the density makes a potential hazard, you know, when one bird... But the density makes a potential hazard, you know, when one burns, they all burn. And so the houses, you know, down the bottom look like they would meet a fire safe standard better than the wooden ones in the top row. But that's just looking at it from this way. But anyway, I think the fire safe standards should be a factor that we're looking at.
But from a parking standpoint, if you, I don't know if you're done with the top row or not, but to me, if you're looking at multifamily kind of housing, which, but I guess at least three of these certainly have a clear appearance of that made parking in the rear is much more ideal, just because it's just, from a street standpoint, it's certainly much more visually appealing, feels more homey to me than, looks more industrial, which would be the one on the far left.
Great. So any other thoughts on this page, just as far as building mass and the relationship to the parking in the building? Anything, again, really, anything you just don't like?
So, we picked on the, the upper left one, and, and I agree with what Larry and others have said, as far as if the entrance is, is through the carport and that, that, that kind of degrades the appeal of that. What is nice, though, is that you have both a, a carport and a garage, so there is, there is additional parking. What is also nice is the, the large balcony and outside space. If, if there was a way to rearrange the entrance to something like that and still have those amenities, that I think would, would be, would be desirable.
Great.
As far as physical appeal, it's, it's probably the least desirable of what you've got up here. But functional wise, it's got a lot...
The extra parking is pretty important.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're ready as, as a, as a, as a culture to give up our cars yet. No matter how close the bus stop is, no matter how close work is, I think Californians as a whole still want to drive.
Yep. I agree. All right, we ready to go on to the next one? Or do, oh...
I just want to confirm what Larry said is, there needs to be guest parking in front. There needs to be guest parking.
Guest parking.
In situations where you have to go to the back and then figure out where the front door is, you know, is a pain. It really truly is a pain, so.
So this one, we're looking more at the building materials. How appropriate are these materials when found on residential? I think you can see there's some stucco, wood siding, wood shiplap, and then the corrugated metal. Are, would any of those, if, say, a project came in, would any of those be something you wouldn't want to see as part of a standard?
Well, this would be kind of a follow-up of what Rich said. I think a lot of Placer County is related, has to be concerned about fire dangers. The, the second one certainly doesn't make a whole lot of sense. The stucco is probably the best to combat against that sort of thing for fire. I just don't think shingle makes a whole lot of sense.
In this area?
I know you can't put a, can't put a wood shingle roof on a house anymore. I'm not sure if they'd even let you sign it that way.
They do have cement siding that looks like that. So you could do something in that respect.
The horizontal shiplap, I know that is available both in a wood product and like a concrete type product. I think that looks good and can be made fire safe. Corrugated metal, you can do much better than the example that you have there. But, but that, that combined with, with some wood trim and stuff could, could be very appealing. The stucco's real clean, the one that definitely needs to be kind of forgotten about, one because it's very dated, and two because of the fire issues is the wood shingle.
Great.
In, in these design standards, do they make a difference if you're in Tahoe, and if you're in the Sierras, if you're down here in the valley? You know, I would think that would make a difference.
It does, and actually, I, I apologize for not reminding, as part of the packet, we did provide kind of an outline of what the standards are, with how the standards will be laid out. And yes, one, we won't, we will keep the standards that were already adopted as part of the Tahoe Basin area plan. This is not in any way amending those. So it'd be outside of that Tahoe Basin area plan where we would look at some of these standards. But yes, we would, they would be more unique to the higher forest areas versus the, you know, central county versus maybe the farther western portion of the county.
There, there was a time when we, I say we, the planning commission and other commissions required the wooden shingles at Tahoe. I mean, that was the only way you could get a subdivision approved. And so I don't know, they do look pretty tacky now in this picture, I have to confess it, because the, there was no trim around that window, which makes it even more disgraceful. But there's still, I think the, since you can get treated, Jake, I think if small areas of, just for accent and so forth, is maybe around the front door or something, is, I think still should be, but I agree, we should try for fire retardant products where, where it seems reasonable to do.
I think even hardy board now, shingles, so, you know, they don't have to be wooden. Just looking at building materials, you kind of think of Placer County, and you have heavy timber, you have the resources of granite, you have the resources of river rock. I mean, there's a number of materials. Then you think of the materials out of Lincoln. You know, there are a number of materials that are really native to Placer County that I would like to see encouraged rather than materials coming from elsewhere. And I think then you have the historic perspective of Placer County, and corrugated metal, you know, in the mining industry was a typical material used at one time. So I'd say kind of was historically been used and representative of the county and what materials are in the county. And it goes back to, I think we were, there was a meeting where the planning commission said, you know, we really want buildings to look like they are in Placer County and not out of Sacramento or San Francisco or San Jose. So looking at these materials, I think that's important to, to relate it to Placer County and, and the history.
What happened, a question, what happens when, because there's a lot of the subdivisions years ago, that we required wood treatment, because that was the effect we were trying to get. I can remember you had to have shake roof and wooden siding and so forth. And the CCNRs of those projects also required that now. What kind of a situation are we creating if we say, if you remodel your house or it burns down, you got to rebuild it? You can't use the wood now according to our restrictions, but yet the CCNRs demand it.
There'll be a couple of things that'll play into that. One, CCNRs, we don't override the CCNRs, so they would need to update their CCNRs to be consistent with. The second point I was going to make is just changes in the state law regarding fire and what, what is going to be allowed materials that are coming down. So whatever standards we pick are going to be required to be consistent with state laws for fire safety. But I do, I do see where, you know, maybe those really older subdivisions where there's CCNRs, there may be some, you know, requirements, you know, that, that these wouldn't play. That being said, this is really for new development. This would be for new subdivisions. This wouldn't be for a single home coming in just to update their, their home. This would be something we would be looking at for new multifamily or mixed use projects.
So, Shawna, I mean, obviously, there's, there's four examples up here, but there's a whole lot of others that, that we would still be considering, or?
I, I think this one was kind of trying to hit the big ones, metal, stucco, wood. And that's why I kind of like the idea that there is missing kind of a rock or a stone type of veneer as well.
Or just a standard T-111 type siding.
T-111, so yeah, well, yeah, that could be vertical shiplap, T-111, yeah.
You know, I, I guess I'd like to make a comment on, on the raw materials. You know, we talked about water already being a potential challenge, and one of the issues that comes up in the state of California and other states is the challenges that go with the resources. And one of those challenges is at some point in time is going to be wood, because you look particularly at California, I mean, what do we have? One timberland operator now that really is, and we used to have hunters. And, you know, this applies to other states also. So, you know, the question that we're going to be challenged with at some point in time is we want to build a lot of housing, but the cost of the raw materials go up because of the regulatory environment that we live in, so. And Placer County can't control that.
Right. Yep. Okay, we'll go on to the next one real quickly. Pedestrian paths, so the kind of the distinction here, one is the sidewalk right up to the curb next to the road. The other one is some mid-block connections between subdivisions or, or projects, sidewalks with trees, landscaping and drainage, buffering the full road, or something a little more where there's occasional trees and parking. I think in, maybe in all instances with the sidewalk, these are representative. Actually, these are pictures we took out in the community today, so those exist and have been approved. So I just, you know, are there any that you would not want to see as part of a design standard?
I guess my bias is towards trying to soften the sidewalk, so that would be more with landscaping. So the one on the left is probably less appealing than the other one.
Well, the one is the walls. You know, I guess the only thing that's missing is a moat.
So that one is, that's definitely a mid, you know, so there's, there's multifamily on this side, there's a condo project down, I think, in Loomis. There's condos on either side, those are the back walls. So what they were asking is these kind of mid-block walkthroughs so that you don't have to walk completely around a block to get across the other side.
I mean, more open appearing.
More open appearing, okay.
You know, landscape is, I think, more appealing to people than kind of walking through a tunnel.
Yeah, one of the things on the mid-block is, is working with the sheriff because of safety and being able to get vehicles through. I know, looking at this, here you have a gate there, the sheriff is not going to be able to follow perpetrator into, you know, they're going losing as they escape through there. And to be comfortable enough for somebody to walk at night in those areas. So definitely work with the sheriff on any standards for mid-block.
Perfect.
Well, I know that we've had a very good water year this year, but as a state, we've done nothing to increase storage capacity. And I think the reliance on landscape to be the, the fix-all for, for cosmetics and what have you, is we're going to be back here in drought again before too long. And, and to keep putting in more water intensive uses purely just for cosmetic function is, I think, a problem we're going to have to deal with sooner than later. The, the far right, the sidewalk with occasional street trees and parking lane, where I see trees planted next to sidewalks, eventually you see the sidewalks getting pushed up by the roots. We, we don't water for trees, we water for the plants next to them. And the roots don't go down, they just go out. So that creates a problem. Also, I see in areas where these happen, people are driving like there's a lane, and then they come to that popped-out landscape thing and stop and shoot out into the other lane and, and cause issues with, with traffic flow. So that's, you know, for, for a few reasons, less appealing to me. I think the, the drainage swale, street landscaping, I think some of that we, we have to utilize to get water clarity in that and, and meet those requirements. So probably going to have to live with that whether we like it or not. There's not much of an alternative. I agree with Richard on the, the mid-block connections, the, the perception of, of being enclosed and, and, and not being safe, I, I think is going to be a problem, trying to utilize too many of those, the way, the way this one is shown. Nothing wrong with old curb veteran sidewalk, except it doesn't have the landscaping, but again, I don't think that's a, a luxury we can continue to impose on.
Yeah, one of the things, and I don't know if you're doing landscaping, but a percentage of landscaping should be native materials. I don't think California's done a good job looking at it. I've done work and lived in Las Vegas, and there they require 100% native materials, and it's beautiful. And it, and it works, and it's water, water smart. So it'd be great to encourage the use and demonstrate how you can use native materials to have good landscaping.
That's great. Okay, street frontage. So four different types of street frontage, kind of building up to back a curb, building with a very large sidewalk in front of it, parking right up to the front, and parking, one is a parking lot, one is a parking street. This one's a street, that one's a lot. Is there a preference? I think they all have their places, but is there a preference?
From a retail point of view, the parking lot in front, I think retail businesses are more successful when you can pull right up in front of the, the store versus having to, to walk across a large lot. It's not always a luxury that land allows, but it, I think it is the most desirable setup.
Well, the first picture is more attractive than the third picture, and they're both parking in fronts in somewhat similar way, but the advertising and the signage makes a difference.
One is, yeah, you would be coming directly off of a street into the parking stall versus the other one going into a traditional parking lot and going into that, so. Okay, I'll keep moving along unless somebody stops me. Building mass, how should the volume of the building be designed? Kind of set forward? The other one has a little bit more of a break in it. The third one has some step back and some variations. And then the last one is set forward at the corner, but has many parts. So is there, kind of visually, are there things that you would want to see more on a commercial corridor, say, with your, remember, we're thinking mixed use and multifamily, not all kinds of projects? These would definitely be more for the mixed use and multifamily type products.
Honestly, I look at these and I don't see a whole lot of difference.
I know. They are pushed up all to the corner, yeah. So there is just some different variations.
I think as long as there's a little breakup to the architecture, which all these have, I think that's okay. I think what you want to try to avoid is a solid wall running parallel with the street or something like that, that has no, no relief, no, no, no architecture to it other than just walls and windows.
I think it's a personal taste thing. I, I find one and three obviously feel better to me than two and four, so I guess it's just aesthetically, maybe colors as much as any.
A little bit, if you take a look at two also, it doesn't look like it's very friendly for walking. I know if you're doing a mixed use, you're going, want something where people are looking in windows and, and not with a blank wall there in order to shop and to feel comfortable walking along that way. So that's one of, you know, the storefronts and how they face on buildings so that you're not going by large areas of nothing.
Great.
As, as building trends change, architectural preferences change, I think the other thing we got to be careful of is not limiting some creativity that's out there with somebody coming up with something new.
So that is a really good point right there to, for me, just to, to remind the, for the, for a project to come through, through a by rider or ministerial design review process, that is a path forward. It saves them time, it can save them money just getting through the process a little quicker, but they do need to kind of check those boxes. They need to actually meet the design standards that we adopt. If there is somebody that wants to come through the process and thinks that there's a, they have a better idea or there's something new, there is still a path forward for them. They, they do get to come through more of a discretionary review, and, and then as, as we collect that data, as we see those projects coming through, if they are preferred, then we just come back in and we update our design standards so that we keep those fresh. That's going to be an important part of this process. Did I go back? I went backwards. Did I do that?
That's what I'd say.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry. Building materials and mixed use developments. I think this is, again, kind of the, the brick and concrete, the shingles, horizontal, metal and glass. The first one was more for multifamily, this one is more into the mixed use. So is there anything that, I think a lot of that we just heard with the shingles, it's kind of the same thing. I think the... I think the metal and glass, that's probably, that's the new picture here, that, you know, may make sense in some certain areas, but this would be an opportunity to kind of comment on that if, if it's something you wouldn't want to see in a design standard. All right, we'll keep moving. Okay, pedestrian paths. In mixed-use, again, we have the, the center, we have a curb with no trees, with street trees and seating, or with street trees and seating kind of at the building, so it kind of pulls that seating in. Is there anything, any of those that you would not want to see as an option under a design standard?
Seating becomes bedding, plain and simple, and it's not quite as bad here as it is in other jurisdictions, but other places where I manage property, any place there is a bench, a table, a chair, it becomes occupied by somebody other than a customer of the business that it sits out in front of.
Okay, just tell me to stop going if I go in too fast. Okay, street frontage, this is for rural areas, so this is definitely our smaller towns, our smaller infill sites. Street frontage options on these, parking again in front, parking facing the street front, I'm sorry, parking in the back, and then shops facing above. Are any of these you would not want to see in a design standard for a rural housing setting?
Is this residential or commercial we're looking at?
Residential, multi, yeah, this would be more of the housing.
Multifamily.
Huh?
I would probably use the same approach that the commission talked about in other areas.
Number three looks like a monster coming at you.
From a house? Give me number three up on top.
Or just those two big eyes up on top looking at you.
Oh, number four, yeah.
Coming up out of the water to eat you.
Okay, the, the next one, building mass. Again, this is in rural areas, you know, anything, I know we just talked about having that variation is going to be very important. Is there anything on that row that you would not want to see as part of a design standard coming through?
I'd say the third one in a rural area just doesn't seem like a rural area.
Outdoor living, so balconies. Full disclosure, some of these balconies exist here in the county, so we went through and took some pictures. Are any of these balconies you would not want to see as options available in a design standard? Or any other ones we may have missed?
I think in areas where yard space is a premium, that a balcony is a, a nice asset on a housing unit. I think number four, it becomes the, the dominant architectural feature, and, you know, that might be a little bit much, but if somebody could do a better job of providing that much balcony space and not having it look quite like that.
I think it's a material issue on that one. They could, they could lighten that up considerably. I mean, if they used what's in number three, or even maybe in the first one a little bit, it wouldn't look as ominous as it is. Right. So I think it's a material issue.
So number three is actually the, the newest Mercy project that was built down in Roseville. The next row, decks and common areas, other types of open space, your pools, your common areas, play areas. Is there anything that you particularly want to see in design standards, maybe beyond these types of open spaces, for, that applicants may want to consider? Anything that you've seen out there you want to improve on? Are these all okay?
Yeah, a pool in affordable housing, that kind of raises a question, because the residents are going to have to come up with money to maintain the pool. And if they're in an affordable housing unit, then obviously a pool wouldn't be appropriate.
My guess is with multiple-family housing, you probably need a dog park of some kind, because a lot of animals.
Dog park.
Yeah.
Good one. All right, that was it. So, thank you very much for kind of entertaining us with that. It does definitely help as we're starting to put these pictures together and, and design standards. We'll be bringing these back to you later and, and be able to look at them in their totality with the rest of the standards, and then you'll be able to weigh in on this. That's it for me today.
Maybe it was in the rural areas, but where you have multiple stories.
Yeah, some are like in that little.
You know, particularly where you have fire issues, you know, you need to make sure there's some way of evacuating from the other story. Quickly.
Good point.
Quickly.
Any other comments, commissioners? Okay, I guess we do need to, anybody from the public here?
Left.
No public's left.
Everybody would like to speak?
Yeah. What'd you do, Jeffrey?
Seeing none, we'll close that part off, and I guess adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming and participating.
Thanks, Shawna, for all of this. It was a great presentation.